Good morning. It's nine o'clock. It is a regular meeting of Grimes County Commissioners Court. The date is Wednesday, the 27th of June. It is 9:00 a.m. We call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is our invocation, followed by the pledge to the U.S. flag and the pledge to the Texas flag. Would you rise and join me, please? Father, we thank you, dear God, for this day and the blessings of this life. Let us never take what we have for granted. Father, we would ask that you be with this court. You be with the citizens of this county, the citizens of this state, of this nation, that we all come together, that we work together to make the places that we live, the work of where we work and where we play, to be safer and more enjoyable for each and every one. Father, for those that have made the decision to serve, we're grateful for them. For our first responders, dear God, please watch over them and protect them. Father, as our citizens move toward a holiday weekend this next week, holiday this next week, Father, we would ask that you keep them safe, keep our roadway safe, and let no injuries or hurt or harm come to any that live here or that visit through our county and our area. Father, again, we just thank you for this day and the blessings of this life. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen. Pledge to the U.S. flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Which we see it, please. We move to consent agenda items two, three, four, five, and six. Oh, I'm sorry. And I had my note here. Public comments. And thank you for coming to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Abby Johnson from Black Girl Community.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to know when are y'all gonna cut these bushes on the side of the road?
Okay.
I know y'all supposed to cut them twice a year, so I want to know when are y'all gonna get around to our area cutting them? They're covering the signs, stop signs and everything. You guys go out into the road to see what's coming and hopefully you don't get hit.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Evans, can you give us the number on your road? Your number of your road?
County Road 313, County Road 206, County Road 206A, and County Road 207.
I will make a public announcement. Next week, normally we would have Commissioners Court on Wednesday. That is the 4th of July. That is a county holiday. The offices and the court will be closed. There is a meeting called for Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. It will be a fairly fast Commissioners Court. We do need to approve consent agenda items, so payroll and treasury all can do their things along with the auditors. But if you show up here on Wednesday, you will find yourself on the porch by yourself, most likely. So just kind of a heads up about next week's Commissioners Court. Are there any other public comments? If there are no other public comments, we will move to consent agenda items number three through six. Number three, consider and take action to approve payroll. Item four, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Five, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. And agenda item number six, approve minutes of previous Commissioners Court meetings. Special meeting on June 6, 2018, 9:00 a.m. Public hearing on June 13, 2018, 8:30 a.m. Public hearing on June 13, 2018, 8:45 a.m. And regular meeting on June 13, 2018, 9:00 a.m. And attachments are available. Are there any questions or comments, Commissioners? Is there a motion? I move to approve consent agenda items three, four, five, and six. There is a motion before the court by Commissioner Mallett to approve consent agenda items number three, four, five, and six, seconded by Commissioner Walker. There's no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. With the court's permission, I've had a couple of requests to pull items out of the sequence order. So if you'll bear with me, if you would turn to agenda item number 23. And that's consider and take action to approve the proclamation honoring the retirement of Tom Turner. Mr. Turner has another engagement this morning, and we are glad for his presence. We're glad for his replacement. Andre Parard. Parard, okay. Mr. Turner, could you, if you wouldn't mind, would you come forward before the court? We'd like to have a...
Well, I do mind.
Proclamation.
If you don't mind, just ask my mother.
I'll read the proclamation for the court. And it says, "Proclamation of the Grimes County Commissioners Court honoring Mr. Tom Turner upon his retirement and recognizing his dedicated service to the county of Grimes. Whereas sixteen years ago, Tom Turner began his career with KWBC and Navasota News, positively promoting Grimes County news and events. And whereas throughout the years, Tom has graced the halls of Grimes County, buildings filling them with lovely sounds of his flute playing, funny jokes, stories. And whereas Tom has consistently provided the employees of Grimes County with Christmas fudge, lovingly prepared by his own hands from a family recipe. And whereas Tom has subjected employees of Grimes County as well as anybody who comes in contact with him on a daily basis to his peacock-inspired toenail polish and his silver ponytail." Whereas, did we mention the kilts? Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of the county of Grimes hereby recognizes and honors Tom Turner upon the occasion of his retirement on this time, 27th day of June 2018. If you want to say something, would you go to the microphone, please? State your first and last name.
Tom Turner, I, yeah, Tom Turner, that's it. Goodness, I, you know, I thank you all for standing ovation. My goodness. I'm kind of, I'm kind of at a loss of things to say here. But let me just tell you, really. First time for everything.
In your business, that's not so good.
No. But I do want to say that my heart is full. And I just want to thank you very much. And I wanted to stress, I'm not retiring from the community. I'm just retiring from the radio. Okay? I may even be back there. I don't know what's next. I didn't know Navasota News would come up. You know, I was over at the Examiner, and there was an article in The Eagle back in 2002 that Brian Broadcasting had bought the station. They were going to do Navasota News. So I interviewed Ben Downs for the paper, and then he interviewed me for the job. And it's been, I mean, 16 years. That's more than a lot of marriages, you know? So I'm just, I'm thrilled. Andre Parard will be my replacement. We have another guy coming on board. His name is Kenny. I haven't met him yet. I'll meet him this afternoon. I'm told that Navasota News will be back to doing morning, noon, and evening news sometime in July. So they're serious about keeping it going. And it's wonderful. I'm so pleased to have been a part of this, and I thank you all.
Thank you, Tom. I miss you. Congratulations.
Do we still get our Christmas candy? Again, with the court's permission, I've had a request from our county clerk.
Judge, did you want to make the motion?
Oh, thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I make the motion. We approve the proclamation honoring the retirement of Tom Turner.
I second that. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Dobinsky. All in favor for agenda item number 23? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. We consider that official. Thank you, Mr. Foltz. Agenda item number 17, county clerk David Paskett. The agenda item reads, "Discuss and take action to approve contract for conduit regarding digitizing records from 1967 through 1846." See attachment number 17. Mr. Paskett, if you'll give us just a moment to turn to number 17, but then... Is there a 17 in here?
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you very much for moving our item up on the agenda. I'd like to introduce Elaine Correll from Conduit. I asked Elaine if she could join us here today in the event that there may be some questions that I can't answer or something along those lines. Back several weeks ago, when we had budget hearings, I talked a good bit about the records management and the indexing, digitizing thing that we had been working on for a long time. Elaine probably feel like she's an employee from Grimes County because if you look in the back of this thing, all the pages in the book, she spent a lot of time going through that to try to get this estimate up. Anyway, I'd like to get this up and going as soon as possible. And just to recap what I talked about in the budget hearing, this is going to be a three-year project. We're going to do 20-year span to begin with, the first year, from 1967 to 1947. And the second year will be from 47 to 1906. And the third year will be from 1906 to 1846. Okay? And we've worked out an arrangement with Conduit where we will pay, the payments will be on quarterly basis. And in three years, we're making 12 payments, which, including the managers fee in here, is going to be approximately $30,000 a quarter.
And that's for each quarter of the three years?
Each, for each quarter of the three years.
So that's 360,000?
Yeah. The contract with Conduit is $347,627.84. I believe that's correct.
Mr. Paskett?
Yes.
Now, this project money is coming from funds that are, come off of fees?
Yeah.
Can you explain a little bit?
Okay. I have two funds, actually, that, two. It's item project 21 and project 54, I believe it is, that contributes. Every time a document is filed in my office, there's records management fees attached to that document. Over the years, it builds up quite a bit of money. And I have the money for this project in those fees. So it's not coming from...
I can ask the auditors, are these dedicated funds that must be used for...
Fund 54 must be used for a specified project, and it has to be outlined, has to be a specific project that is outlined for records archive preservation purposes. Fund 21 is a little bit more lenient, can be used for anything regarding records management, but it is for records management. Fund 54 funds, I would assume, would be used first, and then fund 21.
Do you know what the fund balance of 454?
Not off the top of my head. I know I have provided Mr. Paskett with the figure.
Yeah.
Do you have that, sir?
Uh, I may have it.
It's 454, and what was the other one, please?
Fund 54 and fund 21.
Fund 21.
Fund 54 is currently carrying a balance of about $278,342.
All right. Do you happen to know what fund 21 has, by chance?
Uh, fund 21, I'm not sure if this is the most current, but it's showing here $154,000.
$154,000. Thank you. So that'd be $432,000, and the contract was...
$347,000.
So do you think we can beat Conduit down another $5,000?
I don't know. I doubt it. We've gone from, as I said in that other meeting, from about a half a million dollars at one time in five years, we're down to three years, $347,000. So that's probably going to be, going to be about it.
And again, the fund 54 and fund 21, even though 21 has more flexibility, those are essentially dedicated funds for doing something like this on records management?
Yes, for the preservation of records.
So we can't take money out of that fund and move it over to Rotten Bridge or to something else?
Absolutely not.
And Mr. Foltz, you've been through the contract?
Judge, I have, and I have a question, I guess, based upon the agenda. It says 1846, but the statement of work says 1836. David, do you know which one is correct?
It's 46.
Okay. I'm looking at the statement of work. It says back to 1836, which is fine. I just want to be sure we're clear on it. I have had an opportunity to look at it. I made a request that the three-year timeline be inserted. And I think the most they could commit was a statement that said, "The estimated project timeline is three years," which, of course, that remains an estimated timeline. My concern was that I wanted to be sure that Ms. Przewinski had an opportunity to look at it. And I know Mr. Paskett also had that concern and wanted her to be okay with it. And I think she's looked at it for both of their benefits as well as anybody else that's willing to listen, even though I was told to shut up.
You were told to keep it short, I thought.
Ah, yeah. That's the same thing, Judge.
Okay.
When someone, when I'm given a contract, I'm looking for, are there things that I may point out to the person that's provided it to me? But ultimately, the office holder, the elected official, the appointed official, whatever, they're the ones that are going to have to live up to the contract terms. I'm not going to be in their office on a daily basis saying, "Hey, remember paragraph 7.2.5 says you got to do X, Y, Z." So I just make that comment primarily, I guess, for Ms. Przewinski so that there's no perception that I'm reviewing it and then I know when she needs to do something or when Conduit's supposed to do something. When someone hands me a contract that says, "Take a look at it," I'm looking for, does it say there will be, you know, "Grimes County will be punished for not providing the bill or providing the payment within a day," or, you know, something egregious that stands out to me? One thing that I made comment about, I think, was the three-year concern because I was hearing that there was an expectation this would be completed within three years. That wasn't in the proposed statement of work or anywhere in this amendment. Keep in mind, this is proposed amendment to an original agreement that Mr. Paskett already had with Conduit. And I think he lined out what they previously done. And I think he has had a good working relationship with them, and they're formerly Xerox. The other question, though, that begs is, should this be subjected to competitive bidding? Because it's clearly over the 50,000 mark. Because there is a DIR contract with the state, there's, competitive bidding is not required. Still, it's at the choice, at the discretion of the elected official as to whether to subject it to that. I think Mr. Paskett has said to you, and I know he said to me, "Conduit has our microfilm." And so I think what, in his mind, he's seeing there's some continuity that would be provided by using Conduit. One other thing I would say to the court is, questions you ask about the records management to accounts is a little bit different than most any other account that you all deal with in that, A, it's limited for its purpose, B, it's for the clerk to decide in the first place where he or she wants to use the funds, but it requires, absolutely requires, the Commissioners Court approval to use those funds. Which is not always the case when you allocate funds to an elected official. They get to use those funds and don't necessarily need your approval. Sometimes you will have elected officials come to you for contracts that can't be completed within one year because they want to give you a heads up, "Hey, I'm going to ask for this money in next year's budget." But if you've allocated them enough money for this year's budget, you know, technically, they could say, "Hey, I'm going to run off and have this contract signed without your approval." This is, that's not permissible with these funds. These funds require your approval. And so I wouldn't take that lightly. You will be on the hook as much as Mr. Paskett, as much as Ms. Przewinski, about whether this was an appropriate expenditure. So I'm satisfied with the things that I've reviewed, but I want to say and be sure that I confirm, this is not for me to say, "Great contract, pitiful contract, here are all your obligations." It is for me to review for things that stand out to me that, in place of making comment. I'm relying upon Mr. Paskett, as well as, in this case, which is an odd circumstance, but Ms. Przewinski looking at it and saying, "This is what we want to do. We've examined this. We've considered what other clerks are doing, what other companies can do. We believe this is right for Grimes County."
And Mr. Paskett has talked with me a couple of times about this over the last 90 days. Ms. Przewinski, have you had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Paskett on this?
Yes, I have, and I have looked at the contract.
And what's your comfort level?
I'm confident, because I know he's done business with them, and I think we have a good working relationship with them. And I'm willing to go forward with it.
Because if we have a three-year agreement with him, he's going to serve a half a year. You're going to serve two and a half years.
Right.
I don't mean to serve, but...
Right, right. And it needs to be done. It's something that needs to be done.
And if I could, Conduit is not a new company. Conduit was formerly Xerox, ACS, government record before that. I've dealt with this. This is the same company that I've been dealing with ever since I've been county clerk. So that gives you some knowledge of my confidence in them to do this type of project. And they currently are on our Texaslandrecords.com. The conversion from 1967 to present, they're currently doing now. So they're not new for us.
And with the Judge Act, that's signatory on this contract?
That's bound, yeah.
Mr. Paskett, you know I'm all about improvement. And I appreciate what you're doing here. But after listening to some of the comments made about county attorney, it kind of begs the question, do we have anybody else that has been considered for this? Or even have we talked to anybody else that maybe give us a comparison so that we have two things to look at?
I have. And, but this is somewhat a unique project. A good bit of this is going to be put together. Conduit has our original microfilm and evolved up in Dallas. And it's going to be put together off the microfilm. I guess, to be fair, we don't know exactly how much until we actually get into it. Some of the microfilm, we know in the very early years of this was not legible. But to answer your question, yes, I have talked to other companies about it. They don't have our microfilm. So you wouldn't be able to get a comparable bid with that type situation.
Could we obtain that microfilm if needed, if we needed to get another bid on it?
I guess we could, but I don't know how.
Is there a cost associated with providing that microfilm to another company?
Yes, there is. The microfilm stored in our vault...
Would you come up to the microphone, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
And again, state your name.
My name is Elaine Correll. I'm a local sales executive for Conduit. I'm based in Austin. As Mr. Paskett said, the microfilm is stored in our vault in Dallas, Texas. We can provide that to other companies. There's just a fee for retrieving that. And I'm sorry, I don't know the quantity off the top of my head. It's in the plan that was presented to you. The ability of Conduit to scan the microfilm and then enter the records into the existing 2020 system, I think, is what allows us to keep the cost down compared to another vendor because no one else is allowed to load records into our 2020 system except ourselves and the county. So it would be a double-side work where the third party would have to convert the microfilm into the digital records and then have the county import them, making more work for the new clerk and her staff. So originally, when we bid this project, we bid it as scanning the books. We are going to bring a machine onsite and people to take those very fragile old books and scan them where we don't have the microfilm. And that's a very high-cost item. And I'm working with Mr. Paskett and Tina on this. We found that, I'm learning too, believe me, that using the microfilm would be a more cost advantage, advantageous way to do this. So as Mr. Paskett said, we've refined the cost down from $500 to $340,000. And we do have extensive experience with the county. And as John said, we are on the DIR with the state of Texas on the cooperative contract. So we feel that our bid is very competitive and will provide good service for the county. Any other questions, Mary? If you do.
In the very early stages of working on this project, I can't tell you exactly... the timeframe, but there was two other companies that I had visited with. CoFile was one of them. And I can't tell you the name of the second company that I talked to, but, I mean, they were above the five-year, half-a-million-dollar figure that Conduit was at, at the very beginning of this thing. So, you know.
Back in 2014, I was here at that time when you all were, when we all were looking at this original agreement and are the first, I don't, was that the First Amendment then? In '14?
I don't know. May, may have been. Is this, I don't know what this one's called. Is this called the first or the second?
It's, it's the First Amendment.
Yeah, may have been the original.
Okay. And, and those points were brought up back then. And to have a savings of going from approximately about 200,000 dollars is what I thought I heard you say-
Yes, ma'am.
-with you all continuing the work and refining it like you have. We, we discussed at that time, other companies that did the work and felt like, I think at that time it was a sole source, if I can remember. We went with a sole source contract. But the, the ability of our, the idea that it's on a, a government board, is that correct in what I'm saying? That-
It's a contract that's been approved by the state.
Yes.
When you deal with technological items, there are many entities that go and get the approval of the state, which is the DIR. I can't remember what it stands for, but it's for technological stuff.
I think it's Department of Informational Resources. Yes. Commissioner Cox, if it's, you're worried about the competitive bidding, it's my understanding, dealing with purchasing, that the state's purchasing guide policy is, is very, very strict in the, in the bidding. They, they were competitively bid against other companies for the state to award the contract to Conduit, which means they have a pretty fair price.
Thank you all for finishing my thought. That's where I was going.
But it doesn't mean that you couldn't subject it to competitive bids if you chose to. I want to be sure that's true. It's the same thing anytime you find an exemption, discretionary, or DIR, or interlocal, or buy board, or, if those things are available, the idea is you don't have to subject it to competitive bids because it's been through that process. But, doesn't prevent you, should you choose that route.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Paskett or Representative of Conduit? And based on our client requirements, we have the space available, the aid base and personnel and so forth? Is that something Ms. Johnson's going to get to participate in?
I know Tina, but I probably would, just something-
She'll, she'll be participating in it to a certain degree.
Can I ask that question, David? I know you brought that up the last time about using some of those funds to pay the project manager that's named in the contract. Has that been handled in the budget conversation, or does that need to be part of this, or?
Well, we talked about it in the project process.
Okay. It, it's not, it doesn't say it's part of the agenda item. I just, I was assuming you guys already handled that item. I was the president on that.
Are there any more questions? I'd like to make a motion.
Proceed, please.
Okay. I make the motion, we approve the contract with Conduit regarding digitalizing records from 1967 to 1836, is that correct?
Forty-six.
Forty-six? Okay.
Oh, that's true.
And act with the judge as signatory for the contract.
Second.
I, I do have a question before, because you're, I think he mentioned it, your contract says thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
Eighteen thirty-six.
Oh, okay.
So I just wasn't sure.
It should be forty-six.
So you might not know that one, too.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number seventeen with a modification on approving the contract. The modification is change the date from 1967 to 1846, where it currently says eighteen thirty-six, and have the county judge as signatory. It's presented by Commissioner Walker. It's seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there any further discussion?
I would say just make corrections to the date, because you got another date that's, it says nineteen sixty-six, this is saying nineteen sixty-seven.
So the correction to the dates?
That's fine.
Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Paskett. Thank you, Ma'Ami. You can find that $5,000 discount, we'll still take it. All right, I'd like to get back into agenda order and move to agenda item number seven. County Treasurer Janice Trent, considering, consider and approve the purchase of 19.29 acres from Centerpoint Energy Houston Electric LLC. We have already approved that, have we not?
You approved the contract? I think there was a concern that Treasurer, before having the check issued, wanted to be sure that the minutes reflected that the court took action to approve the closing.
Okay.
Closing set tomorrow.
At ten o'clock.
Right, and you're going to be present, right?
And you're going to meet me there.
I am going to meet you.
The treasurer has a brown bag full of unmarked bills, right?
Someone will send a check. Assuming you approve of it today.
All right. So that's what's before us. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
If there are none. I move to approve the purchase of the 19.29 acres from Centerpoint Energy Houston Electric LLC, and want the judge as signatory.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number seven, as stated, and having the county judge as signatory or the, attend the closing by Commissioner Dubianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number eight, Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator, Mr. David Lilly, discuss and take action regarding Mr. Caranza's request for a variance from section 232.001 subdivision plat requirements of the Texas Local Code for 2.972 acres of land located in foster estates to be divided, to be divided into two lots of .5 acres and 2.472 acres. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge, Commissioner. As we briefly touched on during the public hearing portion this morning, this is a request for the landowner to be able to divide his property into two parts, with one of those being a half acre in size. He is selling that one, that half acre, or planning to sell that one half, half acre lot to his daughter. She already lives in the house on that half acre, proposed half acre lot, and there's already existing city water and septic on both lots. And I had provided you guys with a copy of the variance request from the landowner. And I have a copy of the plat itself, too, if you want to look at it. I know that's going to come up on the next item, but I do have the before and after picture. You have a copy of the proposed division in front of you.
Turnip discussion. Is there a motion? And again, Commissioner Cox, this is in your precinct, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And the time that's been raised, if I just might say this, the time that's been raised before about the size, I mean, this, this kind of conflicts two things. It's a replat, at the same time it's a request for a variance, meaning they're requesting it be reduced to, or allowed to be split into a piece that's smaller than what the court usually permits.
Right.
And the sizes that were incorporated into your policy for subray are based primarily upon TCEQ requirements. And so, whether or not it is septic, whether it's, it's an aerial, what is it, traditional or, what's it called, aerial?
Conventional or aerobic.
Aerobic, that's it. Conventional aerobic system. And those each have different requirements. And that is my understanding of what has been the concern and what led to the set amount of acreage that's in your rules at this point. The variance is actually a request for a variance from that size, is I understand it.
Along with a request for an actual water well with a septic, so that's-
And whether it's well or whether it's on public water, that's right. Those two things combined. But, I don't remember, I, I remember hearing from Ms. Hale, you know, that TCEQ had this floating rule about whether, you know, you could have usable space or could not have usable space that would amount to sufficient to pass TCEQ muster, whether it was a half acre, whether it was three-quarters of an acre, an acre. Anyway, I just want to raise that issue before you take action on it. I think that was the basis for the rule, and so that you ought to consider that now when making a determination, I guess, whether or not there's a TCEQ issue. And I assume that you have, and maybe that issue's been raised, but it seems to me, when you're asked, we addressed this before the rule change about cutting one lot into two pieces, because, because, chapter 232 requires plat in that circumstance. And the court saw those cases time and time again, and finally, and granted variance time and time again, and finally recognized, you know, when you're granting a variance every time, it's not a variance, it's the rule. You know, it's not the exception, it's the rule. And so, there should be an exception for that. And so, we changed the rule to reflect that if you're just dividing a piece into two and at least one of them is over five acres, then you don't need to plat. You don't need to go through this process. I just raised that issue for you all, is if you find yourself granting variances because it's warranted in circumstance, but seeing them time and time again, and it makes sense that in a particular circumstance, there shouldn't be a requirement to plat, that maybe that shouldn't be a variance, maybe that should be the rule. So, when we refine our rules on a yearly basis, this would be something to consider if you think it's appropriate here. Is there a rule that could fix this such that folks in the community didn't have to apply for a variance? I mean, you don't want to burden folks beyond what's necessary. And of course, the basis for the original rules were to be sure that there were adequate, there was adequate water, or adequate drainage-
Right.
...and adequate roads. And then it became the issue of water and wastewater. So, you don't want to put somebody in a bad circumstance, but at the same time, there is personal accountability, and you always ride that fence in trying to do what's right for the people of the county.
Thank you.
And to add to what the county attorney said, particularly the comment about the change to the rules where we can automatically grant an exception if they're dividing it into just two pieces and one piece is more than five acres, that wouldn't apply in this case for two reasons. One, one of the remaining lot is 2.472 acres, and the other reason, as I mentioned during the public hearing, is that this is actually a change to an existing plat. So, we still have to go through the replat process to make the division. Just for clarification.
So this is just approving the variance, and then we have to come back with a replat?
Yes, this is just for the variance.
But it's the next item. It's the next item.
Oh, it is the next item. That's right. I thought I'd never seen it on there.
You don't have to come back.
Yeah, I thought I'd never seen it. Let's go forward.
Okay, with this being public water and the aerobic system, has anyone checked the TCEQ ruling in that? I know before, if it were groundwater, and then I think the spraying of the, having enough room to spray for the system to spray, has that been?
I can only, I can only make a supposition on that, Commissioner. Cat has not had a chance to go out and look at it yet, but these are, both of these houses are already in place, and they have existing septic already installed. Those septics would have had to have been approved before they could have pressed forward with, you know, actually using them. So again, my supposition, my assumption would be that that is already an approved system because these houses are already both in place with the septic. So, the, the thing that they would look at is to make sure that, particularly with one lot, actually with both, to make sure that the aerobic system does not intrude onto the other property to cause any problems with public safety or health. And so, again, the fact that they have a functioning septic system already in place, I have not been able to confirm that with Cat yet, but, you know, my assumption would be that if they already have it in place, they already went through that process. And again, the engineer is here, Sveen Wisniewski, he had stated that, to his knowledge, the septic system should have been about, about two years ago. Is that right? About two years ago, I said, yes. That's not placed. Four years ago, okay.
But the division hadn't taken place. This is, is just now being divided.
Yes, yes. The father wants to be able to, or the daughter wants to actually apply the half acre lot from the father and separate that out from the property.
And it was kind of, somebody's going to come up short, even if you tried to divide it into two half acres, because it's not quite three acres.
Right. Each lot cannot be one and a half acres. That's correct.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Wisniewski? Who's the surveyor? I won't, I won't put an engineer label on him, I see him getting mad at me. Do you have any concerns about the field being totally within the half acre?
It is within the half acre.
Is it a standard, or is it a?
No, it's an aerobic, one sprayer, I believe.
Okay.
So it just has one sprayer?
Yes, and it's contained within that half acre.
And it is, it does give it enough room to, so that it's not spraying the residence?
Correct.
Okay.
These should, these should have been permitted, if they were stopped for a year.
They would have had to have been permitted to be able to use them. But I have not been able to confirm that with Cat.
Who, who installed them? Do you all know? Who installed them?
Who installed your septic?
My concern wasn't, wasn't so much with who installed them, but it's just that, do you do, it was enough room probably back because the land wasn't divided, but now that it's been divided, that's, that's the issue. And the public water makes it a little bit more acceptable because they're not drinking the water from, off of the property. And the sprayer's far enough from the property to where it would, it's just a matter of TCEQ rules.
We should be able to go back and, and find that if our, our records are kept up. I don't know, Marissa wasn't here four years ago.
It would have been Debbie.
Yeah. In the future, we might be able to look at that and see if those records indicate that they were permitted, you know, to, to answer, answer that question. Because there have, there have been, I don't know about the aerobic system, but there have been other systems installed without being permitted in the county, and I've had a number of them in my precinct that I know of.
Might not have done it after the fact.
Yeah.
Would you recommend we do that before going any further with this?
No, with this one here. I mean, because I don't know if the records are there or not, you know? It's just something I want, you know, I'd like to bring up to, that we look at that in the future, when we look into-
Make that a part of the procedure of approving or not approving?
Yeah. Because if we get down the road and we have a problem with this system, you know, it's going to come back on, we didn't, we didn't cover this.
So, if I hear you right, then Commissioner, you're recommending, or Judge, you're recommending approval contingent on verifying that the aerobic system was permitted?
Actually, I didn't make that.
I, I didn't either. I'm, I'm just bringing it up to, to look at that in the future, as we look at these in the future.
Okay.
Well, there are two septic systems labeled on the survey here.
Yeah, there's two separate ones. Right.
So I move that we approve a variance from section 232.001, the subdivision plat requirements of the Texas Local Government Code for 2.972 acres of land located in foster states to be divided into two lots of .5 acres and 2.472 acres.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight, first by Commissioner Cox, a second by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Number two, agenda item number nine, that's in the same line of thinking, consider and take action to approve the replat of Foster Estates Block Two that divides Lot Three, 2.972 acres into two lots to be redesigned as Lot Three A, 0.5 acres, and Lot Three B, 2.472 acres.
Judging Commissioners, again, as we touched on in the previous item, this is a request from the landowner to be able to divide his property into two pieces and be able to then sell the half acre that he's dividing out to his daughter. And as I mentioned before, the only reason this is coming for the Commissioners, normally this would be covered by the consanguinity rule. But because it's in a platid subdivision, there's still a required replat, and that's why we have this coming before you.
What was the rule you quoted?
Consanguinity. It's by blood. In other words, you can sell land or transfer land to somebody who's related to you by blood. I believe to the third degree. Is that right, John?
I don't recall, but it also has the caveat, as long as you're not creating access.
Right.
But if those two things apply.
As long as you're not creating what?
Access. As long as those two things apply. There's exception for ag property as well, as long as you're not creating access. The original exemption of over 10 acres, as long as you're not creating access, we modified that to five acres. So there are a handful of them that could apply. But it makes sense if, I'll tell you just when I head down this trail, but there, there's a possibility at some point in the future, you may want to consider, what if folks are just splitting up among family, and they may be creating access? Do you want to require a plat in that circumstance? Sometimes, family is then, has their hands tied about being able to split up their property when access is going to have to be created. You could create that as an exception. But anyway, that's for another day.
Yeah, I can think of one case a couple years ago where there was a variance request because the property was being divided into multiple pieces among the family members. And there was already an existing drive, that had been a gravel drive that was on the property that connected these lots. But by the, by the literal interpretation of the rule, they were creating access to those back lots.
Judge.
And the Commissioners Court granted a variance to that one.
Well, I move that we approve the replat of Foster Estates Block Two that divides Lot Three, 2.972 acres into two lots to be re-designated as Lot Three A of 0.5 acres and Lot Three B of 2.472 acres.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Next on our agenda is our road and bridge engineer, Gary Walker, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
Good morning, everyone. Item 10 is the reconsideration and approval of the pipeline installation permit from Magellan Pipeline, which was tabled two weeks ago. We have representatives of Magellan here today. We have talked since then. I think we've cleared up some of the confusion that resulted in this item being tabled last time. So I think at this point, it would be appropriate to go ahead and approve their pipeline permit application, recognizing that there will be a separate permit issued for the road use. The fact, as portion of this, which would be, the point is that, that permit will be taken out by their contractor once that contractor is selected. And they did submit a letter at my request acknowledging that they recognize that is the case. And approval of a pipeline permit does not allow them to start construction until the road use permit is also issued. I think we're ready to go forward at this point in time.
I have, I have a couple of questions on the certificate of liability insurance. I just kind of, and roughly, they're going to be crossing 14 roads or boring under 14 roads?
Yes, sir.
And then the 84 inch and the 60 inch, that, that's industry standard for depth. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's actually in the state code, they specify all, all these, the current pipelines are regulated through the Railroad Commission, and they specify some of those criteria. So we don't have a whole lot of flexibility in that.
Okay. And then in regards to the fees, particularly on the item number four, are the fees acceptable to you here in, in regards, is that kind of a standard? And what I'm talking about is the 500 per board crossing, and then the 50, $50 per linear foot? Is that typical?
That is established by our policy. It's already in our permit, and they have already paid the permit fees for that.
Okay. And number three, 81718 is the date that says construction will begin on this. Does Magellan think that's still a pretty good date?
Yes, that is the.
Your name, sir?
Jeremy King, the project manager for Universal Field Services on behalf of Magellan. So that is the date that it is scheduled to begin. There will be several different spreads that it begins in. So it could be that, that the Grimes County end is further down the road somewhat, but that's when construction will begin.
Somewhere on the pipeline is going to start.
Somewhere in the pipeline, yes.
Okay. All right. And where that date is at 81718, we'll note that it has been Lamont as county judge. He's now state representative, so.
Send, just mail it to us.
Just send it to Austin. So you'll make a trip to Austin to get that approved by him. We'll let him work through those issues, but just as a point. And then we have a Magellan pipeline map in our attachments.
Yes, sir.
Is that kind of the final?
That is the current map.
That's the current map. Is that the final map? It's a little, it's a little bitty black and white map.
That is the final map. I mean, it's just a, yes, that is the final map.
And it shows y'all are entering or exiting the county at Highway 30 and the river. Is that correct? On the north end?
Yes.
Okay. And then you're going to exit, I guess, through the power line right away down on the south end. Have y'all gotten all of the land rights worked out?
We're about, I would say, 70% complete on the whole project.
Okay.
I don't have the exact numbers for Grimes County, but we're about 70% complete all the way from the beginning.
And y'all are treating our citizens fairly?
Yes.
Let the court note the answer was yes.
They know what they're doing.
The landowner?
Yes.
It's not their first rodeo, but there could be somebody.
Is this the first pipeline y'all followed this route?
We're following other pipelines that are on that route.
And that's what I want to do.
And we're in easements of other, creating new, except I think it might be up there next year.
We follow, they are following existing corridors as much as they possibly can. And that's one of the reasons that, that we, we've worked with Center Point to try to get where we can inside their easement, if possible, to alleviate some of those landowner concerns of taking new property. So everywhere we can, we have strived to please the landowners as much as possible. And.
How many miles of, of pipe are going to be laid in Grimes County, offhand, approximately?
I don't have that off the top of my head. The whole project's 129 miles. I can get that figured for Grimes County, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no legend on the map.
Yeah.
That we're looking at.
I can get it today, but I have to get my laptop out.
Mr. Walker, are you okay with what's been presented?
Yes.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thoughts, concerns?
You said the line's going to be laid in, within the right way of, of Center Point? Or next to it?
It's, we're, we're trying to lay it within the right way. I think all but a couple of locations where we can't do it. So within the existing, that 200-foot corridor, at some places, it's more than that. But we are striving in those areas, through Waller and Grimes County, to put it within the corridor.
Okay. And you are Magellan?
I work for Magellan. I'm the project manager for this project.
And you're Magellan?
I work for him.
Are you a private contractor, or are you?
Yes.
Okay. And who, what is the name of your company?
Universal Field Services.
Okay.
And y'all are doing the negotiating with the landowners versus Magellan. Is that correct?
And we do it in, we do it in conjunction.
Conjunction.
So we have a couple of Magellan representatives that I deal with, that we work with on a daily basis. But my people handle it here as a conjunction.
So you'll pass on a Magellan, we want them to treat our citizens right?
I will pass that on.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dobianski, do you still have any concerns about the, that you had two weeks ago about who was doing the work?
No. I, I assume that he's, he's the contractor now that we won't visit with. Are you handling, also handling the pipe on the project?
No. So we're the, we're the real estate side. We handle all the real estate acquisition, permitting, everything for the entire project. We then also manage landowner issues during construction. The contractor for the actual project will be decided fairly soon. And they will meet directly with you as far as that road use permit. And I believe y'all have a meeting, one of you has a meeting this afternoon.
Yeah, we have a meeting this afternoon.
Yeah.
So you feel that you're concerned?
We're still working on that.
In regards to the permitting, is there any other discussion or questions or concerns? Because certainly this is now the time for us to bring them up. If there's no discussion, further discussion, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the permit for the installation of, not the installation, but the, the bores on the roads indicated in the, in the application given to us this morning.
Second. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Dobianski on agenda item number 10, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The motion carries. Number 11, sir.
On Friday, we opened bids for construction of, one of the reconstruction of one of the bridges on County Road 132, north of Bedice. If you will call, we bid this project last February. Bids came in significantly higher than what I had expected. Since then, we did some redesign on the bridge and reworked the scope work on the project a little bit. Bids came in much better this time. We had two bidders, Wakefield Bridge and Fuqua Construction. Fuqua unfortunately got confused on the timing of the bid opening, and were late getting here with their bid. So that bid was not open. Wakefield Bridge came in with a bid price of $88,392. Previously, when we bid the project, the bid at that time was about $134,000, so it improved the price considerably. We have worked with Wakefield in the past. They've done a number of bridges for the county in recent years. So I'm recommending a contract to be awarded to Wakefield Bridge in the amount of $88,392.
Whose precinct is this bridge in?
It's mine. There's no further discussion. I move to award a construction contract to Wakefield for the County Road 132 bridge replacement.
I second the motion.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 11, submitted by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item number 12, sir.
On Friday, we also opened bids for the construction of head walls and wing walls, covered structures on County Road 141 and County Road 404. We received three bids on these projects, Palisota Contracting, Fuqua Construction, and a firm called ERS of Mississippi, which is actually out of Mississippi. They saw our bid information through one of the bid services that picks it up off the website. The bids came in somewhat higher than I had hoped for. Palisota was low. Total amount for the two structures, $166,080. Fuqua was second at $229,834. And then ERS admitted at $492,700. They've just been shot. Maybe others out, we'll be happy to come from Mississippi to build it for that price. One of the downsides of having this stuff all available online is that you get some, some folks from way, way far away sometimes.
But the good news, based on the bids, we keep it to a Texas provider.
Yes.
Yes.
Palisota, he is out of Bryan. I'm not aware that they have worked for the county before. We know a little bit about them. They do some textile highway work, some general contracting things. They've been in the area for quite a few years. I've talked to them. They would be able to start here in about two weeks. They'll get all their bonds in place and, and take care of all the contracting items in the meantime. So we'll be ready to go. I will, at this price, I will have to do a budget amendment and move some money around within my budget. We had not planned on spending quite as much on this project. But I think we do need to move forward, particularly on 404. We've had that road closed. We removed that structure months ago. And I don't want to delay this any longer if we can avoid it. And we do, we do have the money available elsewhere in the budget. But I'll, if this is approved, I'll bring a budget amendment to you next time.
Well, I would sure like to see you get it in this year's budget versus trying to do it in next year's budget.
I'd like to make the motion that we award a construction contract for installation of head walls and wing walls on County Road 141 and County Road 404.
Second.
To Palisota, for a total of $166,080.
Is there any further dis, well, first, there's a motion before the court on agenda item number 12 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there any further discussion? There is none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Number 13, consider and take action on request. Consider and take action on request for an electrical permit from Mid-South Energy for installation of overhead lines on CR 443, Attachment 13.
This is an electrical permit for overhead line installation. They are realigning. There's a section of their line along 446 that goes behind, I think it's GW's water plant down there, that they would like to move to the front and put it in the road right of way. They contacted us here a couple of weeks ago and went out with one of my foremen to look at some tree issues. There will be some tree trimming that needs to be done with the installation of the new line in the right of way. But I don't see that it creates any real issues. I would recommend that this permit be approved.
So, are they doing the tree trimming?
Yes, ma'am. They'll be responsible for that.
They wouldn't want to hear roads, was it?
So, I move that we approve the electrical permit from Mid-South, Mid-South Energy for the installation of overhead lines on County Road 446.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 13 by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Number 14 says, consider and take action on a water line permit request by Wixon Creek SUD for an installation on John Rice Drive, Attachment Number 14. Mr. Walker?
This is a water line, service line, basically being extended and providing service to a single residence. It's a one and a half inch line, it's not sufficient for fire hydrant. They, they will be boring the road to make the connection. Other than that, it does all comply with our requirements.
There's no further discussion. I move to approve the water line permit request by Wixon Creek SUD for an installation on John Rice Drive.
I second the motion.
Oh, we can't do the same thing? Is that right?
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 14, presented by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, with the addition of having the county judge's signatory. Any discussion? Let me just ask real quick. Whenever we put in the line like that, does it behoove us to put in the line big enough for a fire hydrant? Or is that just something out of the ordinary?
What, we don't determine the line size, the utility companies do that. What we have done, and the reason we ask this is, we have a line item in the budget to install fire hydrants that help increase fire coverage where possible. Basically, you can't put a fire hydrant line in on less than a six-inch water line, preferably an eight. So, in most cases, the rural water companies that we're dealing with aren't running lines that large. They're doing these small extensions just to get to the next house and the next house. But when the line is sufficient size, then, and if there is not covered already in the area, then we, we go ahead and work with them to get a hydrant installed also.
Thank you. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Road and Bridge Report.
The, I'll add, I'll take, let me do, I had a comment in here. Some of y'all probably were textile closed, of course, on Highway 30 yesterday. From Highway 90 at Grimes Ferry to the Highway 244 crossing. They have an issue with the bridge over Gibbons Creek that, basically, a portion of the bridge dropped down a few inches. They closed it yesterday afternoon. They are doing an inspection this morning to verify the issue. But I've been told that in more likelihood than not, that section of the road, the bridge, can be closed for several weeks rather than several days. They think it's gonna be a more substantial repair, something we could do in just a few days. In the meantime, they're diverting traffic down to 44 to 90. And it's gonna create some significant delays for people that typically travel Highway 30.
Wow.
Just came up late yesterday afternoon. Got a call, actually, we got a call in our office from one of the motorists that saw this, passed that on to textile. They went out and showed it back. This should be worth it. I will talk to them after they've had their, their meeting today and decide what they're gonna do. Get a little more clarity on how long, what kind of prayers they'll be making. But it sounds like it's fairly significant issue.
Are you talking to Lanson in chat?
Oh, I talked to the folks in their bridge division. Anthony Garcia and Carlos Naveo, they're the ones directly handling the bridge projects. That's it, I think.
Well, if they give you kind of a estimated downtime, that would be something Andre would probably wanna get out to the citizens to let them know on that reroute.
I think textile typically would handle the public information themselves, but we'll coordinate and make sure that it's taken care of.
Let me know when you find out, because I've already gotten phone calls on that.
Yeah, I'm sure there were quite a few motorists this morning and yesterday evening that were not happy to find they had to take a long detour.
Because that's, that's, that's gonna be what, a twenty, twenty-five minute detour, isn't it? Or twenty-minute detour?
Probably twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes? So, you gotta come south to 244 and then back up?
Yeah. You're taking the other two sides of the triangle instead of the short routes.
You might wanna call Embos and Yankees and tell them to put some more food in the locker.
Elsewhere in the Road and Bridge Report, we are getting well into our chip ceiling program. We have prepared a number of roads we're gonna start tomorrow. Be the first application of oil and rock. This is the ongoing through July and probably well into August. But we got a good start. We've got several groups of roads prepared. First place we're starting is Gilbert Padlock. We come out after, basically working in the back there, and come out on 344. And it looks like the way everything is setting up, we'll go to Reese next. It's been prepped right now. And then go back, across Speed Ranch, some of the roads in that area in McCrea. And then we'll have a sort of a round two that we haven't started preparing yet, but we'll jump back on that.
Do our crews do the chip ceiling, or do you contract that out?
We do that internally. We're set up to do that. The only issue with that is that it takes up a lot of our resources. We're essentially using all of the stoner crew plus about four guys from Iowa to do this. Some of the other routine operations slow down when we're doing this kind of work. If you, if you receive complaints on, on the routine stuff, that's why. But, right now, the conditions are good. It's time of year to do it. And we've got all the resources on hand. And we'll be working on it heavily now in the next, about six weeks.
Very good.
I do have a question while you're saying that. I noticed in the bills that, and also in your statement, that the mowing has been completed in Courtney and Whitehall and Navasota. I'm getting questions about side booming. Is that a contracted job?
Side booming, we do internally.
You do internally?
The mowing, we have contracts for those three areas. They have completed the first round. But the side booming, we do internally, and that's another operation that gets slowed down while we're doing chip sealing.
Okay, so, as far as the mowing, though, that will continue?
We'll continue with that. We, we contract for two and possibly three rounds of mowing. We've just completed the first round. They'll come back again in August for the second round. And depending on the conditions, we may have a third round later in the year.
But we have two different contractors that do the mowing, right?
And there are three different areas that we contract out. There are three that are listed there. And then, we also do mowing on other roads ourselves.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
The contracts are really set up where we have areas where we have wider right of ways and where it lends itself to contractors who have the very large mowing equipment. And they can generate a lot of production. We do the smaller tighter right of ways ourselves. We have smaller equipment than these contractors do.
Sorry about that, interrupting you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll take us to Agenda Item Number 15, Human Resources. Our Human Resources Director, Lucy Pope. Consider and approve a grade level change for two positions required to be bilingual interpreters for the county. See Attachment Number 15. Ms. Pope?
I'm here.
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Our evaluation team has met several times, and we realize that these two job descriptions have been placed in grade two and should be in grade three. They're both interpreters for the county. One is for the courts and one is for, you know, going out in the field. And that's why we feel like they should be in grade three instead of grade two. And the evaluations were sent to you.
Sure with the court, I did sit on, sit in on the discussions. And without bilingual being a part of the job description, the job qualifies here as grade two. But there's certainly value on the part of an individual that we've, the evaluation, job evaluation team has made that a part of the job description, that they are indeed bilingual to even be considered for that. Therefore, it brings more value to the job. The other issue is that we are having more residents move to the county that English might not be their first language. And as we're talking with those folks, it's important they understand the rules, regulations, or requirements that they may need to abide by as they're going to be citizens of this county. So, we've had this requirement all along for elections to have an interpreter on site. But we now have these employees on hand, and they're certainly valued, at least in my opinion, to the county for them to be able to speak both Spanish and English. And to date, those are the only two major languages that we've had an issue with, is English and Spanish, I say an issue, to provide for that.
Is this a grade level change on it?
Just a grade level change, from a two to a three.
Now, potentially, the individuals could be paid more. But right now, we're just reevaluating, we've reevaluated the jobs and believe that they are more appropriately based as a three versus a two.
So, in this upcoming budget, there will be a change?
That would be a change for one of them. The other one is right at the grade level three. But for one of them, she makes twelve sixty-nine.
Okay, and the other one is?
Makes thirteen.
So...
And the minimum is thirteen on the grade of three?
The minimum is thirteen for grade three.
Okay. Well, I make the motion that there aren't any other...
I have one request. One of them it says it must be fluent in Spanish, but the other one it just says it under experience. I would request that it says required. I think that was one of the conditions.
That's right. So, I'm sure you can make that change. Which, which one is it on, please, Jessica?
The one that's missing, or...
Is it environment?
I need the one that's county.
Okay, you're talking about where?
Is it under experience?
It's under experience. It's under experience, and it's on there. It just says bilingual in Spanish, orally or written, but it's not, it doesn't say required. So, it has, on the other one, it says must be fluent in Spanish on the other job description.
Must be fluent in Spanish.
So, are we making it a requirement that this particular person?
Yes, both offices I believe they have other positions available, but this would be limited to a bilingual person. So, at least one person in the department is bilingual.
Your question, sir?
What if we can't find anybody that's bilingual?
Well, at some point, we'd have to...
We'd have to modify the job description?
If you had people in this position that aren't bilingual, then they'd be in it at a, at a grade two, not a grade three.
They wouldn't follow this job description, they'd follow the other.
But, but when the county needs or feels that we need to provide a bilingual assistance to a citizen, then we're going to say, okay, we need to fill this position, you're not bilingual, you do not meet the requirements of the job. We go back to the drawing board and find someone else to hire.
And, and with, working with this office, I mean, or seeing their operations, are we gonna make that a requirement or something?
This is getting feedback from both depart, getting feedback from both departments. It is, it's very, very needed in order for the citizens to get what they need.
So, we need it changed?
And also another, just wanted to clarify, she said in the court, it's not necessarily to be bilingual for a court.
No, no, I said that work for the court.
They work for the court, yes, it's a day and court office. But it's to, if someone just comes to their desk and they need some direction or you need to file something, or not necessarily the court setting, but just to everyday business.
So, did I hear you, the two of you say, it is going to become a requirement?
That's the only reason it would be changed to a grade level three.
Okay, okay.
I'll get them to change that.
Commissioner Cox, did I answer your question?
Yes, well, I understand, but if, if we don't need a Spanish speaker, will we be posting a different job description than?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Then it would be at a grade lower at this point.
Got you. Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, did I make a motion already? Or did I start making a motion? I make the motion that we approve a grade level change for two positions required to be bilingual interpreters for the county.
I second the motion.
What's the change?
I think that covered it, we say required to be.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 15 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So, Ms. Pope, if you will make that a requirement?
I will.
Okay. Agenda Item Number 16, consider and approve raising the salary cap from 20% to 25% on grade two through grade 10 on the Grimes County salary structure. See Attachment Number 16.
Judge, you were, when we created this rate structure, you were involved in it. But it has been brought to my attention, having the evaluation team meetings, that the department heads are wanting their employees to move in grade levels due to being maxed at that level they're in. If we move the cap to 25% instead of 20, this would leave, just leave a little leeway for employees to have something to work for or to, as well as a retention to for the employee. So, that's why I'm considering, to see if you would consider and prove raising the cap from 20% to 25% on grade two through 10. I think this would be a benefit for the county, because these department heads are coming in and they're wanting to, you know, move their employees regarding their grades, I mean, their job description, but they, they keep saying... mean, their job description, but they keep saying, well, they're maxed out in that grade, and that's why we're wanting to move it. If for some reason, when you, when the budget is, you know, created and there is some little leeway for them to give them a raise, they're not going to be able to, because they've already did their performance evaluations on these employees, and they're rating them high. So, where do you go when you, when one of your employees is at that cap and they can't go any further because of their job description?
So, what I think I hear you saying is, what we've been experiencing is, people are coming in asking that you change their grade when the description of the grade doesn't meet the...
Right, their job description.
Their job description that they have. So, you're asking it to increase, to increase it, is that five percent?
Well, when we created the grade structure, the judge can, you know, back me with this, we did a twenty percent grade, you know, between the lowest to the highest. And if we could do a twenty-five percent, that gives that employer space to, you know, if, if there is money there in their budget line, to give them a little raise and not have to move their grade.
Would you like me to speak for or against?
Either way, either way.
I can speak both ways.
Okay.
When I, when I helped put the salary structure together for the county, I used a twenty percent differential from the bottom of a grade to the top of a grade, which is typical in business. If you have a lot more grades, there's some companies that might have not ten as we have, they might have twenty or twenty-five. That being the case, you would bring the differential from the bottom of the grade to the top of the grade maybe only twelve to fifteen percent, because then you have the opportunity to bump them up. When we, when we, when I put this structure, it was kind of a bare-bones structure, the skeletal outline, and then based on the job reviews, we slotted employees within the county, we slotted positions into the grade that they fit regardless of who was doing the job, regardless of how long they were doing the job. We use that, and we use outside surveys to determine market value of particular positions. So, based on that, that's what we put together. There's nothing that would prohibit us from putting a twenty-five percent cap, and I'm not opposed to that, but when I use the twenty percent, it just made a tighter range. And my middle initials are TW, which stands for TYQWAD, and, and that's okay, I don't mind that. But there would not be anything wrong with taking it to a twenty-five percent differential from the bottom of a grade to the top of the grade. That way, if indeed merit money was available, you had an employee, and generally, a very well-qualified, and in many instances, a longer-term employee that was at the top of the grade and what we, or even a little bit above, because we had some people that were above that grade, we call it redline. You're above the redline, so it doesn't matter if you do an exceptional job and money's available, you're not getting a raise. So, to, and I hate to use the word circumvent, but some of the elected officials or department heads are saying, you know, I really want to give this employee an opportunity for a raise if the money's available, so since they're at the top of their range, I want to move their job to the next level. My opinion, that's not the right way to do it. The right way to do it is to properly evaluate the jobs, market value, and determine what the jobs should be paid. By taking it to a twenty-five percent ceiling, I don't believe you take these positions out of market range. You're still, we're not paying too much as a county for the work we're asking our employees to do, if that makes sense. So, and because we do raise it to twenty-five percent, there should not be a belief that, oh, everybody's going to get a five percent jump in pay. Not at all. It's only going to allow maybe somebody who hasn't gotten an increase to receive an increase, because now there is a little bit of flexibility in the ceiling of their pay grade. So, I don't know if that's for or against, but it is what it is.
It's up to you. Up to the court.
I will say, the fewer grades you have, probably the more latitude you need to have, because you're going to try to have, the jobs are going to be more inclusive of duties and descriptions and responsibilities and things of that sort, so.
But that twenty percent, that wasn't necessarily market value, that was just a raw structure at the time?
It, yes.
It really didn't, you know, incorporate, you know, true market research to find out what the top end for that rate would be, or...
The twenty percent wasn't market research, it was kind of an industry benchmark. A lot of companies would say, we went from the bottom of a grade to the top of a grade, no more than a fifteen percent differential or a twenty percent. I didn't arbitrarily, but based on the number of salary grades or job grades we're going to have, I used the twenty percent number. And the, the thing to keep in mind, the higher the, the job grade is, then the bigger that twenty percent is when you're dealing with fifteen dollars an hour versus twelve dollars an hour. Twenty percent on twelve dollars is whatever the order, what is the top? It's fifteen.
Probably only eight are really being, one is limited to just part-time employees.
Right. Part-time's kind of out of the discussion here.
Yeah, and ten, and ten is not being used currently, so it's really two to nine.
But even if you put somebody in a ten, somewhere down the road, we'd still have that twenty-five percent differential. Did I answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, yeah. Okay. Well, and twenty-five doesn't put it too much based on the number of grades we have either.
I, I believe that if you put a twenty-five percent differential in there, you'd still be within market value. I don't, and if somebody was up top, you would not be overpaying to get that job done.
So, that we would not have to put one in between twenty and twenty-five?
Not in my opinion.
So, you were saying eight, because number ten has nobody in that position?
Yeah, and, and one is limited to part-timers, so we have all, the majority of our employees are within eight levels. And Judge found this right. There's a lot of other counties that they're, because we recently looked at them, they have seventeen, twenty-three, or way more grades, and so they're broken up into smaller intervals. But we have the majority of our employees in eight.
And what I, what I put to get, put together for the county was a start.
Yes.
I think it gives a little bit of latitude to the department here, the elected official, whenever they're looking at job performance and compensation. I mean, you may have people that don't necessarily want to go up a grade level, but want a little more money for the good job that they're doing in the position that they have right now, and that gives the person doing the evaluation the opportunity to say, okay, we can, we can probably do that.
That's correct.
So, I would make a motion to raise the salary cap from twenty percent to twenty-five percent on grades two through grade ten on the Grimes County salary structure, with the caveat that this doesn't imply anybody's getting a raise at this point, it's just the opportunity.
I second it.
So, there's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Sixteen by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, you'll make the adjustments, you'll get a redistribution of that? Because that's a part of the employee handbook, isn't it? County Attorney Number Eighteen, consider and take action to approve the interlocal agreement with the town of Anderson for road maintenance, law enforcement, and 911, addressing services. See Attachment Number Eighteen.
Judging, commissaries, you recall that we considered this recently for Planterville. We have done these interlocals for Anderson, Bedeys, and Iola on a regular basis. It's, at one point, they were broken into separate services, but we combined them several years ago into the various services that the county provides for those small municipalities, including road maintenance, law enforcement, and 911 services. Looking for the date that Anderson is to expire. They, the attorney for the city came to me and requested this slight modification to the standard, and he wanted it to, he wanted the agreement to reflect that Anderson was being responsible for materials and supplies for road maintenance. That's not a requirement of Iola or Bedeys. I would point out, in paragraph two A, what we do and when it gets done is entirely up to the county road bridge engineer. So, there's, this doesn't, this doesn't obligate us to do something necessarily, or a specific project, but it says essentially that the county is willing to work with these municipalities for roadwork purposes, and the city of Anderson, I think, for a period of time, has provided their own materials and supplies, and they wanted to have the interlocal now reflect that. So, that's the paragraph two A, one, that says, "Town shall be responsible for the cost of materials and supplies. Use the improvement, maintenance, or repair of the streets within the corporate limits of the town of Anderson."
May, Judge?
You may.
Oh, the interlocal agreements we've had in the past don't speak to payment. They basically say road bridge can do anything, we do for towns, and we work out an agreement based on the individual projects. We have been charging the cities for materials, you know, as a matter of course, we provide labor equipment, they pay for the materials, it's kind of the standard arrangement. That's not going to be appropriate in all cases. In, in some cases, they're asking for services that require raw materials, and as most things in this life, you can provide services that are totally free, people will overuse it.
Yeah.
So, we, in certain instances where, for example, they want mowing, they want side moving, they want, you know, vegetable spraying and things, we have worked out other arrangements for them to pay for some of the labor for that. So, I'd be a little concerned with not structuring the agreement so that we eliminate that possibility. I'd like to keep that flexibility in agreement if we can.
So, you would be opposed to this?
I haven't actually seen that language. Here, Harry. And I'll be honest with you, it doesn't matter to me, it's up to what road bridge is comfortable with, and what the court's comfortable with. The language was added by the city attorney, so that's where it came from, not from me.
And that was all that was added, was that, talking about the...
Correct. Well, and it used to say materials and supplies in that first sentence or the, of the paragraph above it, so that list of personnel, labor, it also had materials and supplies. He removed that and stuck it in the new paragraph.
See, previously, you didn't speak to who was paying for what. I'd be inclined with this language to have maybe a second bullet point that says something to the fact that other arrangements can be made when appropriate, if the contract, if the specific services being requested indicate.
Either that, or you could change the shout to a "may" and be done with it, I suspect. That, I mean, that's, that's their language, that doesn't matter to me at all. I think it was a political issue where they wanted to announce to the world, hey, we're providing our own materials and supplies, so that we're not leaning upon the county for those things. I think that's why they wanted to put it in there, is my understanding of it.
I think part of it, too, that the different mayors talk to each other, and there's some confusion that they say, well, what does your interlocal agreement say? If it doesn't speak to costs, they get the wrong impression that we're going to do all this stuff for free, and that's not the case. So, I think there may be a little bit of that going on, too.
And, and I'm, whatever the court wants to do, whatever Mr. Walker wants, just fine with me, it needs to be accurate.
I'm fine with this language as far as it goes, I would leave it as shall, makes it clear that they're going to pay for the materials, but I think it also gives you the impression that they're not going to be asked to pay for anything else, and that's my concern.
So, how soon does this have to be signed?
The, the question is, and I was looking back, and my file doesn't have the last agreement that was signed, but it looks like these were, I don't know if it's the first one, probably not the first one, when we combined them, but it looks like July was the date originally for the renewals for Iola, Bedeys, and Anderson. The only record I have in my file indicates that it's from July of 2013, so I'm not sure, because I don't have the last one that was executed by Anderson, I'm not sure of the expiration date. I can certainly find out, but as the court knows, when a document is signed, it goes to the clerk's office, and I don't necessarily always get a copy, I try to maintain copies of everything, but I don't see that in my file. So, if you don't have, if you don't have any, if you want to table this, if that's the question, to come up with different language, the sky's not going to fall between now and the time that we're able to talk about it next. And if there was an issue with what a request made by the city of Anderson, either Mr. Walker or 911 or whomever be obligated on this could hold off for two weeks, hopefully, law enforcement wouldn't hold off for two weeks, or they just continue to plug away as they have under the old agreement. It just is that if we're going to provide certain services to municipality, we need to have something in writing. If there happens to be a little bit of gap between the effective date and the new date, it's not going to be the end of the world.
It sounds as if you need to work out the, you want to have some input on the, on that term.
Yeah, I would be more comfortable if we could go back to them with a little bit of change in the language, just make sure there's no misunderstanding as to who's responsible for what, or... I don't want to take all the flexibility out of it, but I don't want to give people the impression that if you don't need materials, we'll do everything else you ask for, and that's not always appropriate either.
And, and if you want to table it, that's fine, I'll just ask Harry to send me an email with his proposed language, you can keep that copy, and we'll send it to the city attorney, and I suspect they'll be okay with it. Oh, don't keep my notes there.
I move that we table this until Mr. Walker can get the language that we're going on the contract, and work that our county attorney could do that.
Senator.
There's a motion before the court to table Agenda Item Number Eighteen by Commissioner Dobieinsky, commis, uh, seconded by Commissioner Cox. All in favor, say aye. Is there any further discussion, I'm sorry? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize a county judge's signatory. We have had a little bit of rain, but we also had a fire, too. Mr. Little, recommendation?
I don't think that we're in a position where we need to put a burn ban in place again. We had a pretty big amount of rain, and it was spread out over several days. You know, I'll continue to monitor, right now, the drought index indicates that we are low to moderate for drought, but that can change in days, so...
And with Fourth of July coming up, we want to be super sensitive.
Yep.
Chief from Navasota, I underst, do you have any thoughts or comments?
I agree with Mr. Little on this.
Thank you, sir. So, we will take no action on the burn ban. Agenda Item Number Twenty, receive any updates on the strategic plan? I will confess, commissioners, I haven't done much on that with the budget in front of us, but do anticipate getting back into it very quickly, although we've had some meetings in regards to strategic plan items, i.e., ambulance service, EMS, communications, and so forth. Anybody have any input on any items?
I'd just like to reiterate that, just in case some of our citizens didn't know, we do have a fourth ambulance... we do have a fourth ambulance coming into the county starting August first, August first. So we are super excited that St. Joseph and the EMS committee worked out, they're moving forward along with the sheriff department. Everybody's working together to make sure that our citizens are taken care of. We appreciate all of you all's hard work.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. If there's nothing else, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, discuss and take action to determine if air transportation insurance will be offered to county employees during the annual benefits enrollment period. This would be an employee choice at the employee's expense. We have had some conversation on this. We had a presentation by a company, Mesa. And anyway, the discussion with our county attorney was concerned about giving an outside company access to our employees' payroll or deductions and all of that, and I think it's a valid concern. I will say, since I've been involved on a committee or two, talking about ambulance services and then being extremely aware of what is the cost put on the individual that takes air transportation, I'm, I'm somewhat anxious to figure out a way that we can possibly offer this service to our employees and be by their choice. And I found out that there is more than one option available to us. So I've been gathering a little bit of information, and I'm not ready today to make a suggestion one way or another, but, Mr. Foltz, if we worked it out, or, because I think you'd had some debate or discussion with that company, and there was some, something that you weren't satisfied in their contract language.
It wa, it wasn't the end of the world. I guess the principle is, there are only, there are only a few people, do you love when people whisper to you when you're talking? There are only, there are only a few circumstances where someone can take money out of your paycheck. Very few circumstances where your employer is authorized to withhold dollars from you. And you are being asked to permit someone to effectively withhold those dollars for somebody, from somebody's check.
Correct.
I'm not saying there's anything inappropriate about what these folks provide, but you're setting a standard, or you're opening the door to, and I'm, this is hyperbole, but somebody says, hey, if you want to buy umbrellas and you want to have that taken out of your paycheck, I'd like to have your employer approve that we can do that. Well, then you have that person, umbrella salesman, then go into the employees and say, you really need an umbrella, and we got this way really figured out that you can just have it taken out of your check. Well, that's my concern is, you're opening the door to someone to come and withhold dollar, have dollars withheld from their check. It's a big deal, and I want to be sure that you all recognize it is a big deal. You're being asked to be somewhat protective of your employees. Who is it we're going to let in here that can have dollars withheld for their services? And it may very well be justified, it may very well be the greatest thing since sliced bread, but you haven't had anybody else doing this thing other than health insurance. I mean, it happens for health insurance, it happens for retirement. Sometimes it happens for child support. And, and on occasion, you may see somebody for a federal tax lien or something like that withholding tax returns, something like that effect. This, this doesn't typically happen that someone comes up with a great new idea for insurance, who then goes to the employer and the employer says, hey, we have a policy. If anybody offers decent insurance or something sounds good to us, you go right ahead and get a good deal and it'll be taken out of their check. Doesn't happen on a regular basis, so this is a huge deal. When the contract is then submitted to me for review, I want to look and be sure that I'm not subjec, there are a lot of elected and appointed officials who never read any contracts, okay? I'm just going to be honest with you. I know there are a lot of employees that won't read these contracts. And so when they're told at the table where you zip in and sign up for benefits, when they're told what it is, they're going to hear it and they're going to take it for whatever somebody told them, or their impression of what somebody told them, and then they'll sign up where they want. And maybe they'll think, hey, everybody's doing it, I'll do it, when they really didn't want it. Or maybe they'll say, I really want it, but I don't know what all it provides, and later find out maybe it didn't cover everything. I'm being put in a place kind of like you are, where I want to be protective of the employees. I don't want to subject them to that, and I don't want, I certainly don't want to be the guy that says, look, I, I had an opportunity to look at this contract and I never did for you. And so the one thing, and I think we looked at several things, and at the end of the day, the one thing that I was left with that was problematic to me was the provision for arbitration. I, I have never participated in arbitration before. I know very few lawyers and very few arbitrators that, in, in our area, that have participated in arbitration. It is a replacement for a trial. You go and sit in a room or several rooms with an arbitrator and present your evidence, and ultimately, at the end of the day, that guy or girl makes the determination. Provision as it stands right now, it says, "All disputes hereunder shall be resolved by arbitration in accordance with the commercial rules of the American Arbitration Association." I couldn't tell you what those rules are, don't know what that looks like. And so I wanted our employees to be able to have a trial, if they want to have a trial. If there's a dispute about what somebody, this insurance company was supposed to provide to them, I want to give them the opportunity to have a trial, hopefully in Grimes County, but there's a provision in here that talks about Tarrant County, at least in Texas, to have a trial and have a jur, have a jury decide whether they got slighted or not.
And it's my understanding they would not take the arbitration clause out.
That's the provision they would not change. And so I said to them, well, it sounds like you don't want the business of the employees of Grimes County very badly. And they effectively said, yep, that's true, by not being willing to make that change. Seems silly to me, don't know why they're insisting upon arbitration. I can tell you, I, I can't recall a circumstance where I've asked a vendor or a third party to remove that provision and they've been unwilling to do it, other than in this case. But I, I, if you're giving me the opportunity to try to be protective of the employees, that's the thing that I'm asking you to do? You could say, Foltz, we don't care, you're a quack or a nutcase or whatever you say, move on. I just don't want to subject them to something I wouldn't subject myself to.
Understood.
And so I'm okay if it says mediation, but typically, if medi, if you don't settle at mediation, you need to be able to go to the courthouse. And that's what I'd like for the employees, rather than arbitration, be subjected to, because what happens oftentimes is when you get an arbitration, especially if it's an entity that does these things on a regular basis, they have a working relationship with the arbitrator. They have a credibility basis that they have with the arbitrator. The employee does not.
Yeah.
And the employee's then left potentially to find an attorney that can bring them up to snuff or represent them in arbitration, and those are specialized folks. And I just don't want to subject the employees to that. If you disagree with that, it's your call, not mine.
Thank you. Ms. Pope, when is the employees' annual benefits sign up?
August twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
Okay.
I, go ahead, I'm sorry. I think that it is imperative that we listen to our county attorney, especially when he talks about the arbitration. You did check with him, you said, and they were not willing to change that.
I did, correct.
And the other thing about the money being taken out of the paycheck, it, it was quite reasonable if a, a person wanted to buy it outright, they had a website, I think it was ninety-nine dollars a year if you wanted insurance and...
Without the county plan, you mean? Because, because they had, they told us, you don't need to be in the county plan to come and buy from us. We may be able to give you a reduced rate, but I was never advised what that reduced rate is. They'll sell to you as an individual.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether you're an employee and having it taken out of your check. There may be some benefit, I don't know how slight or...
I, I don't think it was much difference. It was still ninety-something dollars for one, for the, for the lower one, and...
Well, I've, I've since found out they're not the only helicopter in town.
Well, to maybe let them know, I don't, to let them know that that's out there, that's one thing, but to subject them to opening up their, their paychecks to an outside source besides insurance, I mean, medical insurance, and, and whatever else we have to by law, then I don't feel comfortable myself doing that.
And I don't know how it would work, and it would certainly be up to Ms. Pope, but if it's been like the other circumstances, you may very well have somebody from that entity sitting at the table when folks are signing up, and obviously, they have something to sell.
Yeah.
And I'm not knocking their product, I'm just saying, if you're asking me to be, you know, to voice my concerns for the employee, that's what I'm giving.
And we can put them right beside the umbrella guy, you know.
Or Sam.
There's water?
The only thing I had to think about this was, this is kind of a health service. Is there not something that we can negotiate with our, with TAC? They provide our insurance that they could give coverage for this at a divisional charge?
They don't give that kind of coverage.
They don't check. They don't do.
So, any other discussion? Mr. Foltz, I, again, thank you for your comments because I needed to hear that one more time, maybe not again, but at least one more time, because I understand where you come from on that. What I'm going to suggest we do as a court is I want to table this item, and I'm going to continue to do my research, and if any of you commissioners or Ms. Pope or anybody else that knows of a service that provides air transportation, that we might want to give them the opportunity to share that information with our employees, I think it's something we ought to consider. Being a rural community, we might not get our ambulance in three minutes or five minutes, so in the event of a serious situation, we, we need to be prepared, so. It's my recommendation, we just table this, Agenda Item Number Twenty-One for the time being.
May I ask something for clarity's sake? Are you saying you want to table it because you want to see who else is out there that may not have the arbitration clause, yet you would still want to offer it being taken out of the employee's paycheck?
My, my idea would be to, at the end of the day, not take it out of the employee's paycheck, not opening up that can Mr. Foltz is talking about. But if we're going to have somebody here that the county's saying, employees, talk to them, I want to make sure we vet that vendor fairly well so that in the event they did chose, choose to spend their money in an insurance way with that provider, that at least in our opinion, we're kind of helping them find the best provider of that.
Okay.
That's my thought.
That clarified.
Okay. Anything else? Then we will table Agenda Item Number Twenty-One. Number Twenty-Two, discuss and take action to initiate the process for revising and updating the Grimes County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Current plan is from January one, 2013, and expires December thirty-first, 2018. I understand it's a five-year plan, and I just very recently became aware that we even have a mitigation plan. So, Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge Commissioners, our, as you, as the line item describes, our hazard mitigation plan is due for revision and renewal. It was actually adopted in, I believe it was in 2011, and, but we got an extension on it in 2013, so that's why it now runs out at the end of this year. In fact, I believe the actual accurate date of our current plan is March of 2019. But our target is to review the plan and make revisions and updates in time for the Commissioners Court to adopt a new one prior, well before the March date of next year, so we have a current plan in place. I have a...
Mr. Lilly?
I'm sorry?
Excuse me, but I remember being here when we worked on the first plan, so...
Yes, that was before my time, yes, ma'am.
You were here in 2013?
No, you're talking about the, when it was initially developed in twenty, and adopted in 2011?
You're talking about you.
Oh, the second one, yes.
The initial, okay.
The initial one, okay.
The current plan we have was from 2013.
Originally, it was from 2011, but we got an extension on it so where it's, it's still current until March of next year.
We were outdated from 2010, 2013.
Okay.
So we got a new plan that went in in 2013, and that plan expires according to you, Ms. Lilly, in March of 2019?
Yes, sir. Does that sound right?
December is when it goes out, December twenty-eighteenth.
Is that what the city one is also?
We're, we're all one.
Okay.
Okay, so city and county are all on one, one plan. All right, and, and you know for a fact that it's...
I've read through the documents, it shows that it expires, which I shared with documents that shows it expires December.
Well, the reason I put this on the agenda is because, one, we need to start doing something.
Yes, sir.
And what that something is, I'm not sure. I have been made aware that, and, and I don't know, well, I have an idea, Mr. Lilly, of what your time allocation is or so forth. There is a company that I was introduced to that does this sort of thing for municipalities and counties, but they also can do it on a grant-funded basis. And even though there is a split where the grant pays for a portion of it, we're obligated for a portion of it, the vendor has said, though, in more than a few instances, there's also grant money available to cover our match cost. I don't have all the details, and I'm kind of vague in the knowledge of all of this, in grants included, but from what I understand, this is, and David, feel free to share, Chief, feel free to share, I understand this is a, a pretty extensive exercise to appropriately put this mitigation plan together, to make it acceptable, because it, again, it will be a five-year plan, it's my understanding.
Yes, sir.
I visited this morning with the...
Could you come up to the podium so we catch you on the mic and introduce yourself?
I'm Jason Kacowski, from Navasota.
Thank you.
I visited the, this morning with the emergency management coordinator for City College Station to find out where Brazos County currently stands with theirs. They have been working on theirs almost three years, and they tried to do it in-house. He says, he was telling me this morning, that was probably not the best route to go. His, in his opinion, they, you know, would have, could have, should have, they should have probably gone out and found somebody to do it as well. There, as you said, there are companies out there that do this, and if we want to get it done in, in a timely manner, and, and I'll be honest with you, even hiring the company to do this, we will not meet, even if it's December or March, we will not meet that goal, those deadlines. This is something that's going to probably take twelve to eighteen months. Again, College Station, Bryan, College Station, Texas A&amp;M, Brazos County, they're almost three years working on their plan, and it started with a class from an A&amp;M group, from a, so, of course, they got about forty percent into it, graduated, and the rest was left in their lap.
Is this, is this, Mr. Foltz, is this one of those situations you keep talking about that, you know, if somebody's not watching the calendar, that next thing we know, we're past due or about to be out? I mean, because honestly, I just learned about this a week and a half, two weeks ago, and if it's going to take us twelve months to put something like this together, then you're right, we are going to be expir, we're going to hit an expiration date.
What this will affect is any future after December, if there's a...
Grants.
Any hazard mitigation grants that are available.
Yeah.
Yes, we will be, they will accept our applications, they will put it on the back burner until we become eligible again. But, yeah, it, it, you know, it's likely we could miss out on some funding at some point.
Commissioner Walker, you're the senior commissioner, why didn't you tell us about this?
Well, if I make no correction, the judge's secretary, not you, Sheree, was, was dating all of this, but this is almost a plan, once you get the new one, you almost have to start almost working on the next one.
I understand.
The original plan was put together in 2005, Bruce Cog.
Bruce B.B. Cog, right.
Bruce B.B. Cog, that they took on all counties and did it. We got behind on that one, and so when it expired in 2010, we were continuing to work on it, and there again, and it started out with, with one company and... And there again, and it started out with, with one company and ended up Teaks, and it took three years for us to get that, uh...
Chief, is this something that we would do collectively with you and the other municipalities in the county?
Yes.
Along with David Lilly?
This is the, this is a plan that is usually headed by, by a county and municipalities piggybacking onto it.
Okay.
Um, there, cities can go out and do it on their own.
Why would you?
It just doesn't, you know, especially, your larger cities will do it.
Okay.
But when you're a small community, small county, small cities, it doesn't make a lot of sense to go out and, you know, everybody do their own thing.
Can, can, can in twenty seconds or less, one of you say what the county's mitigation plan is? And if you need sixty seconds, that's okay, but I mean...
Well, the plan itself...
What does it do for us, other than allow us to apply for grants?
That's, that's the biggest part of it. But if you go through and if you look at the plan, you know, the big meat and potatoes of it is a lot of data, a lot of research. And that's where we need somebody to come in and do it. We don't have resources here to actually do that research and then get, and to find that data.
Is that like chemicals coming through the railway, coming through the roads?
It can be, that's just one answer. It's going to be looking at your natural disasters, it's just going to look at our past floods, it's going to look at past tornadoes dating back. If you look at the plan, uh, we can do...
That's why it's continually growing and takes so long, you can't just kind of say, oh, here's what it is.
You'll see tornadoes.
So, it's data that needs to be collected throughout the whole plan every time.
And now, in the back part of the section, it, it, you know, this is where the, where we hold public meetings and we get input from the public. And it's where we start identifying the hazards that are out there that we know of. And how can we mitigate it? If it's County Road one nineteen or whatever that floods all the time, well, okay, we, we can mitigate this by putting in a larger culvert, okay? Or we can build a detention pond upstream somewhere. Uh, and what is that going to cost, what does that look like? How, how are we going to fund it? And what is our target date to get that done? And those are the types of things that we will have to work on.
So, then if we, I'm sorry, but, so then if we have it in our plan and we've recognized that, and then we see grants out on the internet or wherever, then it...
Well, it, it will be your hazard mitigation grants. And it, those usually come about from a disaster, like right now Hurricane Harvey, that's one of them, and you're, you're going to have your hazard mitigation grants along with your other, you know... The grants that we normally get here, it brings it back to, you know, after we have a disaster, it brings it back to pre-disaster. Well, if it just brings it back to where it was before, we know it's going to happen again.
Yeah.
So, now they'll release more money for hazard mitigation, and then you can go after that. If you have identified that as a, as one of your hazards, one of your projects, then it becomes eligible for funding.
So, let me ask you, David, if you, if we don't have, on the mitigation plan, what we're doing with the GLO or going to those meetings, would that eliminate us from participating in that business? Or is that a whole nother...
No, for any hazard mitigation grants, if we have specific projects identified in our hazard mitigation, uh, plan for mitigation, like the, like you said, a particular road or a particular site that needs a certain type of mitigation, that is strength to our application, but it does, like you said, it doesn't negate us from being able to apply for more general type grants, like we've already done through a bridge, we've got several hazard mitigation grants that we've applied for. And of course, all these are highly competitive too, so there's no guarantee we'll get them, but you don't get it unless you ask.
Right.
And, but there are some that we just recently put in, Hazard Mitigation Grant Four, where we went back and looked at what the county had submitted in our portion of the current plan and focused our attention on those locations, roads that were identified, locations, owners of roads identified where there was mitigation measures needed. And the same thing I noticed with the city, there was a number of measures that I think you guys already approached or attacked most of those, uh, where there were specific projects identified within the city of Navasota for mitigation. So, that's the second part of the plan. The first part, as he mentioned, is the biggest part, is to determine what our hazards are and, and develop or, you know, put together data to show the impact of those hazards on the county. And then the second part is to identify measures to mitigate those hazards.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, um, Commissioners, the company I was introduced to is H two O?
H two O, they're actually the original company that came in through the, through Brazos Valley Council Governments in two thousand and five and put the original plan together for all of Brazos County.
Mr. Lilly, I'm not saying that you can't do this, but I'm saying I don't think I want you to do this. I don't think you have the, the time, along with everything else we have you doing, from what I understand, is going to be involved in putting this together. I don't know that H two O Commissioners is the company we want to do this, and I don't know how many companies are out there.
There's many.
I don't know if they're on a, a buy list or whatever, if it's got to go out for bid.
It would have to go out for bid, yes, sir.
But H two O, what H two O told me is that they work somewhat on a contingency?
Somewhat. What I would, what I would recommend in...
And the somewhat would need to be clarified.
What I would recommend is doing an RFQ, covering both, somebody to manage the grant or the hazard mitigation plan, and to develop the plan. So, that way you have one company that can come in, they can write this grant for having, requesting money for the hazard mitigation plan, and then manage it and, and then write, write your plan. Instead of having multiple companies, you try...
Doing different pieces.
Yeah, no, I, I concur.
And can we also set a timetable on that, so we don't have another three-year wait to get this one done?
Well, I mean, I think that's up to us.
Well, of course, you said that was, that was Brazos County that took, it took them three years.
They're, they're still working on theirs.
Yeah, and theirs is obviously understandably much, probably more comprehensive than ours, ours is to a certain extent, because they have a lot more infrastructure, a lot more issues to be concerned about. But the hazards that they deal with are very similar to ours.
Sure. Well, once we get the plan, it, we probably could either re-submit another RFQ to, you know, start the next plan right away. And that could be a, gather information as it goes for the, you know, to approve the next one.
Now, I will say too, that I have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow at the Navasota Center from eight to twelve. It's the initial salvo, basically, having all the first responders, uh, city, county, uh, to come together and start looking at what we need to do. You know, basically, set our game plan for where we need to go from here. And that's again set for tomorrow at eight, I think, actually, I think I set it for eight-thirty, uh, at the Navasota Center.
I would, if, if, if the court chooses to go the route where we're going to set out RFQs and hire somebody to do this, I think we hold off on meeting. And, because they're going to lead this, they're going to come in, they're going to set these meetings up, and they're going to lead you through this. They're basically going to hold our hand as we go through this process.
How well did they work? You were here when that was being done before, were they really good? Did they know, they pretty much have their act together?
They've done many, many more since then, so it's, but there's, like I said, there's other companies out there that do these. So, I think you just go out and see what's available.
Well, I'm not the Wizard of Oz, so I'm not all-knowing. So, what would you two gentlemen recommend is the next step?
Set out the RFQ, review those dead, hire companies. The, the, one thing about the grant too, it, it, I've had a feeling from what I, from what I've been able to gather, I mean, it's at minimum a ninety-ten. At, at most, we may have to come up with ten percent to cover this loss.
And what's the cost of a mitigation plan typically?
Well, I'm going by what Erin had told us in that meeting. Uh, she looks at a county our size and she's, she was thinking somewhere in the hundred thousand.
So, what is, I don't know, for ten, about ten.
And there might be grant money to even cover the ten.
Yes.
But if...
Well, she, I think, I think we can do it, some of the, some of it she said we could cover through N-CO.
Yeah.
Some of the meetings and stuff that we...
Oh, that's right, because the hours that we spend, the time and effort, we're able to, uh, put that towards the charges and get the reimbursement back on that, okay.
We just need to track those hours.
Right.
And again, the, uh, the company, whoever comes in to help us with this planning process can track those hours for us to help us to, uh, document that.
Commissioners, I'm open for suggestions.
I'm of the mind to hire a company, not to minimize any of the qualifications of these two gentlemen, but it sounds to me like they're both recommending that that may be the road to go down due to the extensive nature of the mitigation plan.
So, you're making a motion?
It, you're going to make a motion to go out for RFQs? Is that what we do?
I would, yes.
So, your motion would be?
Uh, I, I move that we, uh, uh, create a RFQ for, uh, hazard mitigation to address the grant and planning phase of the hazard mitigation plan. That's my motion.
I'll second it. What he said?
Well, y'all better line it up with what the gentleman says. Is that okay, Mr. Foltz?
You bet.
Okay.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number twenty-three, uh, to put together an RFQ to, and I'll try to state this, bring in a company that would put together a hazard mitigation plan for Grimes County and municipalities within. Is that fair?
That's...
I would add...
And a grant as well.
To administer the grant.
And to administer the grant process for the county. Did y'all catch that over there?
Over there.
Okay. So, we have a, uh, Commissioner Cox first and a Commissioner Mallett seconded. Are, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you two would keep us, David, if you, both y'all keep us kind of informed of how this is going, so...
Yes, sir.
All right, so who's going to make, who's going to write up the RFQ on that?
Um...
Sir? I'll definitely pass the buck on that one. Kalina, you want to do that?
That might be something that Jessica Kudusha, I know she's worked on the RFQs.
She's done a few for us before.
Would you pass that on to her, that she's been assigned by the court to handle that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, ma'am, very much.
As long as she gets help from the outside.
Yes, I will coordinate with them.
Thank you, David. That'll bring us to agenda item number twenty-four.
I move adjourned.
I second it.
Any discussion?
Oh, no.
Okay, there's a motion before the court on agenda item number twenty-four. Commissioner Dobianski to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Walker. With no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, folks, for being here.